We continue our election coverage on Insights on PBS Hawaii. We will talk with candidates Republican Josiah Araki and Democrat Corey Chun, who are running for State House District 35, which covers Pearl City, Crestview, and parts of Waipahu. We will also visit with Jen Kagiwata and Matthias Koosh, who are seeking to represent Hawaii County Council District 2, which includes downtown Hilo, Waikia'u'ka, and Kaumana. Tonight's live broadcast and livestream of Insights on PBS Hawaii start now.
Aloha and welcome to Insights on PBS Hawaii. I'm Darrell Huff. Tonight, we will feature two more races where there is no incumbent. Due to redistricting, Hawaii State House District 35, which includes Waipio, Manana, and parts of Pearl City and Waipahu, will elect its first new representative in 30 years. Longtime Representative Roy Takumi was forced to run in another district after reapportionment. Later on in the show, we will sit down with the candidates for Hawaii County Council District 2. We look forward to your participation in tonight's show. You can email us or call us with your questions. We also encourage you to get involved with the conversation on our Facebook page. Now to our guests. Democrat Corey Chun was born and raised in Honolulu and now calls Waipahu home. He graduated from Iolani School and received his law degree from Gonzaga University. Corey has worked as a legislative aide and a legislative staff attorney. Republican Josiah Araki grew up in Pearl City and Waipahu and graduated from the Hawaii Technology Academy. He got his bachelor's degree in political science from Corbin University. And let me start with you, Corey. What is your district like? And what are the big changes that are happening that are maybe big challenges for that area?
Sure. So District 35, a part of it is similar to the old District 35, but because of reapportionment and the growth out west, the new district lines shifted and there's more of Waipahu included into the district. So when you kind of look at the district, it is sort of split by the H-2 freeway, I guess. Because you have Manana, Pearl City on one side, and you have Waipahu on the other side. And so really, that's, I think, when you look at the district, there's a lot of retirees. You also have a lot of young families and a lot of, you know, folks just trying to make a living in Hawaii.
You were born and raised in that area. What's it like? How would you characterize that district?
Well, I suppose first I should make a minor correction that I wasn't born in Pearl City. I moved to Pearl City when I was about five or six years old. The way I'd describe District 35 is a community that is very much shaped by its people. There are several major groups, of course. There's the Pearl City, which is largely, you know, older, primarily Japanese families. There's Waipahu, that is primarily Filipino and is very culturally so. Then there is Waipia Gentry, which, sorry, not Waipia Gentry, Crestview, which is kind of the nicer part of town, I guess, for the district. And that's, you know, it's got a very beautiful part of town. And so where I view it is that it's almost like three mini districts in one.
What are the challenges that are facing the district the most, would you say?
Well, as I've been walking around, going door to door, what I find is that, I actually tend to ask people that. What, in fact, that's my opener, is what do you think is the biggest thing that is challenging this district? What needs to be solved the most? And invariably, the two most common answers I get are crime and homelessness.
Do you get the same kind of answers yourself?
Yeah, I do. Similarly, you know, with the pandemic and with the economy having not come fully back, a lot of folks still have, you know, not, all the jobs haven't come back yet. So, you know, as the nature of when people are struggling, sometimes property crimes do increase.
You know, when you're running for state house, though, and basically those are both major county issues, homelessness can be seen as a state issue. But, I mean, what do you tell people you could do about it?
So the way I've kind of looked at it, you know, I've had the opportunity to work at state legislature and also the city council. And I think there's a lot of things that could be done when the council and the state legislature work together. Because it shouldn't just be on the legislature or the council. They can't do it alone. So even when it comes to crime, right? So HPD is under the city and county of Honolulu. But for the penal code and things like that, that's actually a state issue. And the prosecutors, you know, have to follow the state law. So there are, you know, ways to change things without having direct control over, you would say, the police department.
Well, let me, I'll ask both of you a little more specific. Josiah Araki, what would you, what do you think the root of the crime problem is? And what do you think should be done to reduce crime?
Well, my view of it, and this is actually a focal point of my campaign, is that a large part of it is the breakdown of the family. Statistics show that there were three aspects that greatly influence if you're more likely to end up in poverty, homeless, involved in crime. And those are not having a high school diploma, not having a job out of college, and having children before you're married or 21. So what I view as the issue for, that is largely contributing to our, you know, the massive exposure in crime, is that the family's breaking down. The people are, sorry, sorry. Most families in Hawaii, both parents have to work. That means that they have less time at home with their children. That means that more and more children are being raised by their cell phones or their iPads. And parents are having less and less influence on their children. And that's for those who are lucky enough to actually have a whole intact family.
But what do you, as a state legislator, what can you do to ensure families stay together?
Well, one thing, I believe, is to promote education reform, to focus on emphasizing the importance of family, to emphasize the importance of completing a degree to economic stability, and to, also, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Let me go over to Corey. Again, a specific, what specific things would you see would be the biggest thing you could do now to reduce crime, not just in your district, but obviously across the state?
Well, one of the things that we really need to look at when it comes to crime is just, you know, the entire justice system. Because when you look at it, it's just an HPD problem. You know that having more police officers is not going to solve the problem. You could also look at it as a prosecutorial issue. Maybe they're not charging a lot of cases. But then you also have to look at the judicial system and how that's working. And in order to actually address the issue, you sort of have to look at all of these in tandem and figure out where the issues are and how we can fix that.
Okay, so, but, I mean, so it doesn't sound like you've got something right in front of you now that you would throw at us, the first thing you'd like to do? For example, you know, either prison reform or sentencing reform or anything specific like that? Like, do we need more prison space, for example? A lot of people say we need more prison space.
I think the biggest pressing issue is just the lack of uniformed officers. Because I think the greatest deterrent to crime is a patrol officer. But when we're 30, you know, 300 positions short in HPD, 30%, you know, that is a big hole to fill. And so we see HPD having to utilize overtime and having police officers work many different shifts just to cover those patrols. So, you know.
Well, let me ask Josiah. I know you, you were trying to explain, I think, what you can do to help strengthen families and, as a crime deterrent. But is there also something you think that the government should be doing to crack down on crime?
Well, absolutely, sir. I'm not going to say any names, but I have family members who are in HPD. I don't want to, you know, I don't want to go into specifics. I don't want to break any sort of confidentiality stuff. But some of the stories I've heard from them off duty, it's pretty apparent that a lot of HPD aren't, that HPD isn't only understaffed, but those officers they do have feel rather unsupported. They are hesitant to take up certain cases because they're worried that it'll stretch the resources too thin, that it will be not even taken up by prosecution. So I believe that not only should we, like my opponent said, focus on having, you know, try and fill the empty police officer seats. We should all, we also need to make sure that those officers we do have feel adequately supported to do their job and do their job well.
Do you think that corruption is a big issue? You hear much about that. You've had members of legislature now, multiple people in the county level being prosecuted. We now have multimillion-dollar bribery cases on the Big Island and on Maui. I mean, what do you feel about, are people asking you about that? Are they concerned about corruption in government?
The primary concern that I've been hearing people talk about in government, when I've been talking to them, is things regarding nepotism in government, giving, you know, giving jobs to people because they're related to somebody. And I will say, there's definitely kind of a, everywhere everyone knows somebody here. And that's kind of, on some level, it's kind of, you know, the culture of Hawaii. Oh, your Uncle Bob's cousin. I'll give, I'll just let you off with a warning for this ticket. I'll let you off with this ticket. But on the other hand, things like what you were talking about, corruption, bribery, those things need to be addressed and cracked down on. We can't have a republic or democracy if we can't trust that the system is functioning properly, that people aren't putting special interests ahead of their financial desires.
What do you hear about corruption from voters? Do they, do they ask you about it? Or do you get a sense that trust is at a very low level for government?
Yeah, it is. So in conjunction with corruption, which, you know, if you're going to talk about trying to crack down on that, you know, it's very hard, right? If someone's going to take a bribe, I mean, just going to take a bribe, it was envelopes or whatever. But I think a lot of their other concerns are more transparency. You know, the legislature, unlike the county councils and even the neighborhood boards, are not subject to sunshine. And so I think just because of what's been happening, there's a greater push to sort of include some of these, you know, aspects of the sunshine law that could apply to the legislature as well.
So do you think they make too many deals behind closed doors?
Well, just to open up the process, right? So I think that's where the distrust comes. Because, you know, decisions are made and a lot of times the public don't, they don't really understand how those decisions were made. And a lot of those things are not shared with the public. So I think just, you know, increasing transparency and opening some of those aspects of the process up would be very helpful.
Let me ask you specifically about trust in government as opposed to corruption. What do you think needs to happen to, Corey was talking about, you know, opening up the legislature, for example, more, make it more clear. What else do you think could be done to make people trust government? Do you feel people trust their government?
Well, I believe that, from what I've seen, trust in government is very, very low right now. Nationally, I believe, I seem to recall hearing that it's at an all-time low. What we need to, we definitely need to, as he said, open up the government. We need to make sure there's transparency, that people can see what is being done. Yeah.
Let me move on. I got a question really quickly because it's on this subject. It says Roy Takumi, this is Bob in Pearl City. Roy Takumi held this seat for 30 years. It took reapportionment, which is basically a process happens only every 10 years, to change that. Do you, and you guys both obviously have this opportunity because of that. I mean, do you support term limits, though? Why or why not? So would you like to win this job and then give it up in eight years or 12 years?
Oh, well, the simple answer, sorry, may I go first?
No, go ahead.
Okay, sorry. So absolutely, I am very in favor of term limits, just in general, both on the state level and on the federal level. I believe that by imposing term limits, you can, for starters, ensure that new blood is coming into the mix. And the people who time out, if you want to put it that way, they, you know, they age out of the position because of term limits, that doesn't mean that they're no longer going to be involved in government if they have good ideas. They can run for a higher office, they can run for a different office. Let's say an eight-year, let's say I win, I hold the seat for eight years through some...
Then you run for council. And then when you finish the council, then you go back to legislature.
Then I can run for city council, or I can run for state senate. Or if I'm feeling incredibly rambunctious, I could run for mayor or governor.
Or president. Let me, term limits for you, Corey Chun, sorry.
At this time, yeah, I don't know if I support term limits. And here's why. So, you know, there are legislatures, you know, I've worked for an organization that had colleagues that worked in other state legislatures. And one of the things you lose when you have term limits is you lose that institutional knowledge. Because the government isn't easy to figure out. It takes years to actually understand how the process works, how financing works, all of these other things. I mean, I've worked in government for over a decade and I don't know everything. And the other issue, too, is that when you have term limits, it's almost like a rail project, right? So you have folks that maybe start the project, but because they know they're not going to be there, they're not going to be accountable when whatever happens, happens. So it's a really short-term way of thinking sometimes. Whether if there are no term limits and you're actually going to be around, you have to actually look long-term.
You know, it's an interesting point that you brought up because, and I'm not advocating one way or another, but if you look at, for example, say Mufi Hanneman, right? Who was seen as the rail guy. Kirk Caldwell was seen as a rail guy. When they tried to go to a higher office, they didn't do well, partly because of rail. So maybe the accountability works with term limits, too, because when you try and go to the next level. But just a thought. Another viewer calls, Ted via Facebook. What's the first bill you would introduce at the Capitol if elected? I like this because it kind of goes to your priorities. What's the first bill, Josiah Araki, you would introduce?
Sure. So as I said, to me, I view several, my, sorry, the main message of my campaign is focused on three things. Family, education, and liberty. One of the first things that I'd like to focus on if elected is I would like to, I mean, what I'd like to do is I'd like to bring back the super ferry. But that's probably not the, not going to be coming up for a long time. So the first thing I'd like to do is I'd like to look at what we've done with the COVID lockdowns. I'd like to look at, kind of look into it and make sure that while, and propose legislation, that while, ensures that while we are able to make judgment calls when there are emergencies, that it doesn't stomp on people's individual liberty.
Let me give Corey Chun a chance. First, respond to what he's saying, and then I'll ask you about your first bill.
Yeah.
The COVID lockdowns is what you're saying. It sounds like you're saying you would ban lockdowns.
No, no, no. What I'm talking about is, I feel that if there are going to be lockdowns, they need to be, they need to be equal. If they're going to have a lockdown and say that, say Walmart is allowed to remain open, then they should, shouldn't be forcing a small business that is also selling the exact same products, force them to close down, but allow the big corporations to stay open.
Okay.
That's the kind of thing you're talking about.
That's probably something you wouldn't have a big problem with.
Yeah, I think the pandemic taught us a lot of things. Probably the biggest thing, just as a policy issue that the legislature took up and I think should still keep looking at is the governor's emergency powers. Because when you look at the emergency powers in chapter, I forget the chapter. But, you know, it's, 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 it's almost like it was contemplated towards dealing with natural disasters, not like a two-year-long pandemic. So how do you adjust?
Not specific to public health.
Yeah, exactly. And now that we've dealt with it and, you know, the next one could be on the horizon, how do you ensure that the emergency powers are there? So in the case of emergency, things can get done, but yet also protecting, you know, the rights of folks?
I guess now we could start talking about public health emergencies and planning for them just like we do for hurricanes. Go ahead.
I just also wanted to note that that's actually very similar to the other part of what I was trying to get to with lockdowns. Make sure that there's a good balance between ensuring the people in government, the governor, the state house can do what needs to be done, but also not trample on the liberties. Sorry, could you please repeat?
No, that was fine, but I need to offer Corey.
Sorry about that.
No, it's okay. Corey Chun a chance to say, what would the first bill you would introduce? What would be your first priority?
So one of the priorities, you know, I worked in the nonprofit sector and I realize how important nonprofits are to, you know, the social safety net of the state. Government can't do it alone. And what we saw during the pandemic was, you know, just because of finances, a lot of the nonprofits suffered. There were no grant-in-aids for almost two years. And so what I would like to do is, similar to what the city does, set aside a certain amount of funds just to make sure that, you know, the food banks and all of those that are really needed during times of crisis are sustained.
Let me move on to another subject. You guys have the rail pretty much running through an important part of your district. And there's, do you guys have the area where the Pearl City Park and Ride was supposed to go? And is it?
Yes.
It is, it is part of your district. So I know the traffic really is bad in parts of your districts. It could come up this year or soon that rail needs a continuing funding source. Would you support, Corey, continuing to maintain the surcharge for rail in order for it to expand in both directions and so on? You guys actually be able to use it pretty soon to at least get to the stadium? What do you think about continuing the rail funding source?
That's something I definitely look at at this point, just because of how much of the rail has already been completed. You know, I had the privilege of actually working on the Waipahu Transit Oriented Development Plan, sorry. And so, you know, the whole idea with rail was, with any public transportation, right? It's the great equalizer. So cars are expensive, gas is expensive, insurance is expensive. But if folks have, you know, a robust public transportation system where they don't need to rely on a car, where they can get to work or get to school, you know, that's a great equalizer. And so, yes, you know, the rail project has had a lot of challenges. You know, as a community member, we've actually faced some of those challenges where we saw the initial, you know, column layout on Farrington Highway. And then when they started putting the columns in, they were, you know, changing certain traffic flows that weren't, we didn't know about previously. So, which caused, you know, more delays and actually some changes.
Let me give Josiah a chance to talk a little bit about rail. You guys actually have now the opportunity to watch the trains go by on a regular basis. Would you support, you know, continuing funding of the rail project well into the future?
The rail, that is, the rail is ironically kind of one of the things that first got me interested in politics. I, as I mentioned, as mentioned in my bio, I went to Hawaii Tech Academy. Hawaii Tech Academy is currently by the YMCA in Waipahu, but it was originally there in that little building right in front of it. And I remember for years, I was going to school there and I just saw them slowly, slowly, barely making any progress on the thing. And I remember sitting there and thinking, this, this is kind of ridiculous. The, you know, in the 1800s, they built the transcontinental railroad. It was thousands of miles long. They built it in three or four years across the continent. At this point, I am leaning towards, I would not lean towards continued funding of the rail. However, I would need to see the specific document proposal first to, you know, if it's...
Okay, I got a couple more questions from viewers I'm going to get right to. From Monica and Corey Chun, I want you to take this one first. Would you support building a new jail to replace O-triple-C? That kind of goes back to our crime question, but that's going to be something in front of the legislature again.
Yeah, well, you know, I, I guess in some respects, yes, because I do think there's overcrowding. And when you see outsourcing to the mainland, you know, that's even another issue, right? With how prisoners are treated and all the issues with that. But then, when you look at crime in general, and I think there's also needs to be an investment in prevention and also with diversion programs. Because that's really the key to addressing crime before it gets out of hand.
Let me give you Josiah Araki a chance. Do you think that we need more jail space?
So, we, if we are having to send people to another state to serve prison time, that really shouldn't be the case. I believe that we need enough prison space that we can act, we can be sure we can put the people who need to be put in prison away. I hold the view of prisons that, of putting people in prisons, sorry, that it should be, that the primary reasons they exist is for, they owe something of a debt to society and that they are also being kept off the streets. Now, I also believe in rehabilitation. That's, I strongly believe in rehabilitation. But I think that a lot of people are too caught up in the rehabilitation aspect and don't focus enough on the, what I might, I consider to be the primary purpose, which is to, to, well, yes, a combination of punishment and to keep them off the streets until they are properly rehabilitated.
Okay, we've got about one minute left, guys. This has gone quite quickly. I'm going to, last question, also from Monica, gambling. Would you support gambling? I kind of need a little bit, little bit more than a yes or no question, but...
Okay, absolutely not. Gambling brings with it, gambling brings things like prostitution and increasing drugs. You know, I know everybody loves, I know everybody in Hawaii loves Vegas, but...
Especially your district.
I know. But...
I'm just teasing you.
At the same time, I think that...
I think I've got your answer?
Sorry.
I need to get, it's okay, don't apologize. Corey, what's your thoughts on that?
Gambling in general, no. But, you know, if I had more time, I'd like to go into a lot of the other aspects of it.
You got time for another sentence?
You know, it's just that I don't know if the benefits will outweigh the detriment to the state, that's why.
Okay, very good. We'd like to thank our guests, the candidates for Hawaii State House District 35, Josiah Araki and Corey Chun. And as we get ready for our next segment, please enjoy this hikino story from the student journalists at Waikiau High School.
When I first started this shop, we had probably seven different kinds. However, now 20 years hence, we have probably 20-something varieties.
Two Ladies Kitchen started out small, but soon, things picked up and business started rolling.
I believe that when you have a small business in Hilo, they're very supportive. Because we were sort of hidden away and I didn't advertise, it was a word-of-mouth product.
Right now, I'm shaping fumford mochi. In the middle, it has koshiyane. Koshiyane is the smooth taste of the red bean.
After picking up steam, the shop quickly gained loyal customers.
I love mochi, so when I heard she was open, I went. And I was so impressed. So I kept going back. I went about two or three times a month.
Two Ladies Kitchen is truly a homegrown business.
In the very beginning, there were only two of us who really made the mochi, my aunt and myself. We would practice in my mom's kitchen every Saturday. And she would just teach me different aspects of mochi-making.
Family has always been a central component of the mochi and manju shop. Uchida and her aunt, Tomy Tokeshi, are the two ladies that started the small shop over 20 years ago. Tokeshi has since retired, but Nora continues to run the business with the help of other family members.
These are my parents, Sachi and Koshiyane, Kishi and Toma.
And Sundays are day off and every day they come here after their exercise.
And that family atmosphere extends to the workers as well.
We all know each other. It's like we're brothers and sisters. And of course, everyone loves mochi.
You know, just the atmosphere that we give to the people, the greeting, you know, the smile.
You just get a feeling that it's welcoming. I really like that.
Fans of Two Ladies Kitchen stretch from Hilo to the neighbor islands, to the mainland and beyond. One thing's for sure, their customers know to stick to a good thing when they find it.
Customers who keep coming back. They're like boyfriend and girlfriend when they first come here. Then they do their showers, their weddings, their first babies, you know, grandparents, celebration, their whole family. And this is what I look forward to.
This is Casey Leguire from Waikiau High School for Hikino.
Aloha and welcome back to Insights on PBS Hawaii. Hawaii County Council District 2 includes downtown Hilo, Bayfront, Wailea, University Heights, Peahunua, Heights, Peiho'ua, Waikia'uka, and Kalmana Council, and Kalmana. I thought Kalmana was the name of the next person, sorry. Councilmember Aaron Chan reached his term limit and has given way to two new candidates looking to become the first-time elected officials. Jen Kagiwata lives in Peiho'ua with her husband and two kids. She has spent decades working in schools and nonprofits on Hawaii Island. She currently works at the Hawaii County Council where she helps to create policy. Matthias Kush was a Hawaii Island firefighter for 25 years. He has led a number of nonprofits, including West Hawaii Fisheries and Hilo Bayfront Trails Inc. He also served as the PTA president for Ernest Bowen de Silva Elementary School in Hilo. Let me start with you, Jen Kagiwata, and I will ask the same question to both of you. Describe your district for folks that don't live there, may have not been there much, and what are the big challenges that you see facing your district?
Thank you so much, and thanks for having us today. Well, our district is really diverse in a lot of ways. It's Hilo Town, so the downtown area, then going up, all the way up through to Kalmana and all the way up, all the way Kalmana City, and actually goes past that to encompass Mauna Kea and Pohakalua, but there are no people up there, so luckily I don't have to, we don't have to knock on doors there. But then it also goes over all the way to Waikia'uka, so quite dense populations compared to a lot of other places on the island.
And a lot of space to cover.
And a lot of space to cover, but I've really enjoyed, you know, getting to know all the little neighborhoods and all the little pockets of the district as I've walked door to door.
Is there any one issue that jumps out when you talk to people?
There are several, but I'd say they all encompass, a lot of them encompass around working family issues. And so, for me, that is like a super important part of this. That means like affordable housing, good jobs, and childcare. And I feel like if we could, you know, improve those things for people, then people's lives would really improve overall.
Matthias Kush, same question. I know she gave a good geographic description. What would you say is the character of the district and what are you hearing are the things people want you to focus on?
Sure, well, thank you, and again, thanks for having us out. Hilo is really the seat of government in Hawaii Island, and it has a long history, you know, illustrious history through the plantation eras and rivaled Honolulu at one point. And so, it, its population really reflects, you know, all of the culture that we know and think of in Hawaii. You know, in Honolulu, so many people hail from Hilo. And in those neighborhoods like Peiho'ua and Kalmana and Waikia later after the tsunami, and so it's an interesting place. And the, the issues really are the same issues you hear on this show frequently and what Jen pointed out. Affordable housing, downtown Hilo and the homeless issue is a really big issue on people's mind. And affordable housing bleeds into overall cost of living issues. So, and there's a lot of things the county government can do and things that I've had a lot of experience in. You know, working downtown for 10 years at the fire station there, Central, and working on infrastructure and understanding those pieces that the county controls that can really help address affordable housing and cost of living issues.
Let me give Jen Kagiwata a chance to follow up on that. The first question that we got via email, what are your recommendations for improving the appearance of downtown Hilo, especially with homeless persons living on the sidewalks of downtown Hilo? Now, that's definitely a statewide problem. Hilo, you know, is, as close as you get on that side of the island to an urban area--
Right.
And you've got the problems of many other urban areas. How would you address that? What do you think needs to happen?
Yeah, so, I mean, right now, we're actually in a pretty good spot to start addressing homelessness. The county just voted this last session to put $9.5 million a year for the next five years towards homeless, towards addressing homelessness on our island. And so, it's a really good time for that. And what I think that probably means is looking for a place to consolidate some of the services for homelessness, because we know we need to get people into permanent housing.
It's a fair amount of money. $10 million a year on the Big Island is a fair amount of money.
Exactly. So, but what I like about it also is it's only for five years. So it's not necessarily going to be empire building or a lot of new organizations. It's getting to work right away and starting to address the problem. And I think, you know, we have to really look at those other things like making sure we have mental health services and addiction services. And if we can get those all in one place, and as well as things like free meals, then the people are not necessarily wandering around from place to place trying to figure out where they need to go for services.
Matthias Kush, what, Matthias Kush, what's the, there's so many ways to pronounce that name. What's your perspective on downtown Hilo and the issues of homelessness? And also, I think that there is, sometimes it's the business climate there can go up and down quite a bit.
Sure. And so, you know, when I talk to people about downtown Hilo, there's two sides of it, right? I worked for 10 years at Central Fire Station, went on countless homeless calls, really got to know the people. My daughters, to their chagrin, used to laugh when I would know a lot of their names, so we went around downtown and, and there's, really, we need to treat a lot of those issues. And Jen brought it up, there's a white paper that just came out, did testimony at the council the other day on Tuesday, about a strategic plan to start focusing that $9.5 million annually towards treating some of those underlying factors that homeless face. And then the other side of that is, I worked on the downtown multimodal program, which is a plan, I'm sorry, which is a mouthful, but really what it is, is reengineering downtown to slow traffic, more bike and pedestrian access, better lighting at nighttime, down low, covered areas, more outdoor seating. So, and then at the same time, we need to address the permitting issues and making it easier for businesses to be vibrant and be a place where, you know, a workforce can live, work, and play.
First, if you have anything to respond on that, go ahead, but otherwise, I do have another question that I think is particularly important on the Big Island with everything so spread out. And I remember during the pandemic, looking into the fact that there's like no internet in so many places and so on. It says, what are your thoughts about improving recreational facilities for youth in Kupuna? Is that a real shortage in your part of the island?
Sure, I am gonna quickly address, or just elaborate a little bit on what Matthias said, because I think one of the other things I've been hearing as I go door to door, there are some small things we can do fairly quickly to help the downtown. One of them that I've noticed and I've talked to people about is just like the trashcans are overflowing. To me, that seems like something that even the county could step in with, at least for a short while, get that under control. We can treat it just as we do all our parks, pick up the garbage, and get that taken care of, because it's really hard to address a lot of these problems when you've just got, you know, overflowing garbage that people are walking in. So, something like that. But I also agree with many of the things Matthias said. As far as recreational facilities, yes, we have some of the oldest facilities that need the most care on our island, and we really need to pay attention to this. We have to stop kicking the can down the road to our children and our grandchildren. We have to start investing in some of these things now. One of the ways that people can look at is, sometimes we can do a recreational facility that could also double as something in case of emergencies, just like we did for the Hilo High Gym. And we need those as well in case of emergency natural disasters and things like that.
What would you say, Matthias, about the condition of those things? And how high a priority is that recreational facilities?
Well, you know, that's, that's really close to me as president of Hilo Bayfront Trails and, and working hard to get those federal grants in. I've learned a great deal how to bring in these federal grants that run through the state and then are administered by the county and nonprofits. And the, the state of infrastructure in Hawaii County, whether it's, you know, administrative buildings, roads, or sewer systems, or other critical infrastructure, including parks, bathrooms, et cetera, is, we've been borrowing from the future for a long time. And I really want to introduce a process that's based on engineering and not political cycles or department head cycles, much less like you don't wait till your car tire blows out to fix it when it gets to a certain tread depth. You know, that's an engineering spec. You say, let's go and, let's address it.
You know, you're reminding me of a, of a story we did at Hawaii News Now about how there's a, like hundreds of millions of dollars needed in wastewater infrastructure on the Big Island, in a, just a tremendous neglect over many, many years. We're talking about recreational facilities being neglected and, you know, is, is Hawaii County Government underfunded? I mean, do you have to start looking at ways to bring in more money in order to start catching up with this thing? Jen?
Yes.
How do you do that?
Yeah, I think we do. And I do think that we can ask people who have a lot to pay more of their fair share. We have a lot of visitors, just like some of the other islands, but we're having more and more people buying their vacation homes, their second homes, their timeshare homes. And we can, I think we can ask people to pay their fair share so that we can support all the infrastructure needed on our island. And so I think there is money there, but we have to have the political will to go ahead and do that.
I mean, other, other counties have done that to a certain extent, but it seems like they never quite get to the point where they're really getting to the income level of some of these folks that have these things. Do you have that opportunity on the Big Island? I know on the west side, there's a lot more than on the east side. Is there a west side versus east side mentality sometimes?
Not, not really. I think the council really does a pretty good job working all together. And because I actually work at the county council right now, and I've been working there for almost two years, I've actually gotten to know all the council members. I don't know the two new, I actually know one of the new ones coming in, but one of the new ones I don't know. But I know all the other council members, and I think working together is the only way it's gonna work. And my experience has always been working in things like nonprofits, schools, government, where it's all about working together to move something forward.
It's like almost always underfunded, but let me, let me also ask Matthias Kush, what about that? Do you think the county needs to find more revenue sources and where do you think it would come from?
Well, statistically, Hawaii as a state is, has one of the poorest records of getting federal funding. And I really learned this working in the nonprofit world and the volunteer work we do. We call it siloing, where, you know, these, because there are so many agencies involved and a lot of this money is very prescriptive in how it comes, so there are a lot of people have to touch it and sign off on it. And so, we've learned in our success, just creating these bike trails, has been to get these people together, get skin in the game, and really like what Jennifer was talking about, is that collaboration is so key. You know, talking about the council members, I've known a lot of them for ages, like Rebecca Beck from paddling days in the, you know, 90s, and they, there's a good team out there working--
Let me just try to get a real specific answer to what she proposed. Do you, do you think that the tax rates on higher income properties or transient properties should be higher?
Yeah, I think there's, should be a lot more per-use fees. You know, like right now, when you pull a building permit, it's really pretty cheap. And my guess, and it would be something I really want to look at, is to see how much it actually costs to process a building permit and make something like that instead of having you and Jennifer support, you know, another person's building permit through your property taxes. So those things. And then I do think there's a lot of room, there's so many, as you go door to door, and I know you can attest to this, it's crazy how many vacant homes there are.
Vacant, and vacant for what reason? Because people are only using them part of the time?
I, I don't know. They're just vacant, and I know there's a variety of reasons back there, but I know, having lived in West Hawaii, there is a ton of homes that sit as vacation homes that are used only a couple of months a year. So there's, there is revenue streams that can be looked at, and I know they're already starting.
Yeah. As far as those vacant homes go, yes, we definitely could do more. We could put a vacant home tax, which I know other counties are looking at doing. We need to make it more profitable for people to rent to long-term residents than it is to have them sit vacant. And right now, that's not really the case. So it's, it's, you know, having a carrot and a stick, but we need to hopefully help people make those decisions to, to do that. And, you know, another thing I know, I've heard from people who have a rental, and sometimes they're worried about their place getting, you know, not well taken care of, things like that. I know there's also a program in Oahu that's similar, where you can, there's a pot of money for landlords in case they rent to long-term people and they, they have problems with them. And so I'd like to see us do something like that to also incentivize landlords to rent to long-term, yeah.
Another question that just occurs to me, and I'll go to you first, Matthias, with this one. You know, just rip from the headlines, you had two extremely horrifying crimes over the last week on the Big Island.
Indeed.
There's been some crazy crimes on that island recently, and it feels almost spooky how much stuff is happening. What do you think is happening in terms of crime on your island, and what do you think needs to happen to address it?
Well, you know, you don't want to rush us through these questions, but I, working with Choppo, I was just talking to a sergeant the other day about that and asking them, you know, if they could ask anything, what would it be? And there's not much. The, the police are not as underfunded, I mean, aren't as short-staffed as they are here in Honolulu, where it's like crisis level. They are struggling, no doubt. And, but I think the basis of it ties in with affordable housing, ties in with those mental health issues. We have a dearth of mental and physical health facilities on the Hawaii Island. And so, that's a big problem. And people are not getting help, and the pandemic with the shutdown, you know, they, if you ever, I mean, I worked in Puna for a long time, and it's, people get stuck out there. There's no job opportunities, and so it's easy to fall into this web of--
Drugs.
Drugs and violence, and you kind of forget about civil norms after a while. And the police, I mean, they work so hard. They really do, they do a great job. We, we have great police officers, and they have an enormous challenge, but I think that's the root cause of it, you know, is that cost of living issue and finding good jobs and workforce development, and all those things tie together. And there's things that the county can do, and I think, I'd love to do that.
Your, your take on the crime situation?
Yes, well, I'd agree with what a lot of, what Matthias is saying, but yeah, I'd stress, you know, some of the, we're really lacking some of the services for addiction and mental health. And it's more of a long-term solution, but I also, my background's actually in early childhood education, and I think we really need to look at, you know, how we're starting kids off early. Police departments know this, that investing in early childhood programs, after-school programs, reduce crime, increase high school graduation rates, help people get jobs and become productive members of society. I know it's a long-term thing, and people that are elected into office don't often want to work on things that are that long-term, but it's really important that we, we start looking at investing in our community in that way as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, and also, I mean, it sounds like you, you agree on a lot of those issues in particular, but what do you do, and I'll start with you, Jen Kagiwata, what do you do to get an increase in some of these services and so on? I mean, we're talking about $9.5 million. Is that part of the plan, is to get more in substance abuse and mental health services?
Yes, yes. In fact, the top two, Matthias mentioned the plan that they came up with, and the top two things are permanent housing and services, mental health services and addiction services. So those two things are definitely on the top, but we need to invest in getting people trained and, and making better jobs so that people can stay as mental health workers. We've got people in our Kaiser's facility, you know, striking right now. I drive past every day when I go home. And, you know, better jobs, it means better pay, but it also means other things like getting paid family leave. A lot of women feel like they, it's not even worth it for them to go to work if they don't have better childcare and flexibility so they can take care of their families.
Let me, let me move on, on that, on that point. In fact, I think I'm gonna change point. I've got to, I've got to honor, I've got to honor our audience here, because this is another thing that we just heard about. What's your opinion on solid waste and recycling? Our landfills are filling out. This is another big issue on, on the Big Island, isn't it?
Yeah, and, and it's another good example of where there is opportunities that are being used in Asia and Europe to turn this liability around with some management and turn it into a possible positive, right? And, and waste management is, it's complicated because we're small, I mean, Honolulu's struggling with it, and it's a big place with H-power, but there are scalable incineration plants. I would love to revisit that as an energy source and a place to divert. But there's also things like composting, you know, if in our urban areas in Puna, Hilo, Kona, Waimea, if we could start collecting the garbage and working with residents and educating them to-- and working with residents and educating them to compost, recycle, we got to double down on recycling. And then your solid wastes, we would really, really, we can, we have a huge potential to reduce our waste stream. And so that's, that's some of those wins that we can turn from the liability.
I agree with a lot of what Matthias is saying. And in my conversations with people like the Sierra Club and people like that, we definitely, I think there are some really good ways to look at smaller as opposed to one large or two very large sites that you end up trucking lots of things to. It's not good for the environment, but to do smaller waste management. And I think we, yeah, so, so I think there's a lot of opportunity there. I would disagree slightly on, I know recycling is a thing that makes people feel good, but we know recycling actually doesn't do a whole lot for our environment. And we need to reduce our use of plastics and things like that. It's, it's a lot better for the environment than trying to recycle it after we use a bunch of it.
The other thing that you've both, the other thing you've both mentioned is, is jobs, a lack of jobs on the Big Island and, and lack of diversity in the economy. I don't know what your guys' county permit situation is. I think I heard today that it still takes a long time to get a permit, which means that construction is always delayed. What, what do you think are the things that, that you could do as a council member to diversify the economy and generate jobs? Particularly in your district, but island-wide?
Yeah, well, people are always talking about that and kind of looking for that next new thing. Is it the, you know, the new sugar, you know, industry or the new whatever that's going to be big for our island? But I actually don't think that's what we need right now. We have a ton of jobs that need filling. We need doctors, we need nurses, we need teachers, we need people in the county government. We have, every week, I get a big, long list of, you know, jobs that are available that are not being filled for engineers and, you know, permanent inspectors, all these people. And we need to make these jobs good jobs. If people can, if working families can go to work, come home, pay their bills, and stay in Hawaii, then they'll be happy to take those jobs.
They sound like good jobs, particularly on the Big Island. Why would someone not?
But they're not because, I mean, if you just saw today, there was a, there was an article in the paper about Hawaii is like one of the hard, you know, the highest places to afford to live in. And, you know, it's just very, very hard for working families to make it work. So, but there are things we can do. We, we do, like, I'm thinking of the county jobs.
I need to get, let me, let me, Matthias, a chance. On job development and diversification.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's a huge problem. And again, it's tied into things that the county controls, like things that you don't think about, but like expanding our sewer system, right? It needs engineers, but it will create jobs. It'll help us build greater density where it's, you know, in that, that service area. It'll help drive housing down, it'll create, push rents down. So there's all these things that are tied together.
So you're saying that if you improve the wastewater system and the infrastructure, you can build more housing that people could afford?
Well, you can do things like densities, like add Ohana's for, make them cheaper, our AD, our version of the ADU, Accellory Dwelling Unit. You can put mass transit becomes more usable and more applicable. And people are going to use it more if it's easy to use. So in our, like, in-town areas, a higher density would be good. And like downtown mixed-use zoning, you know, use those upstairs for residential and have the downstairs be businesses, those kinds of models that, that we've used 100 years ago and were very successful. But those are the kinds of challenges that we face is, is drawing people in. And it's a chicken and the egg kind of thing. And so it's an incremental approach. And, and what Jennifer mentioned before, all of these things are small bites. There is no silver bullet. I actually heard someone else mention that on this show. But there is no big deal out there. It's lots of small bites that collectively make an impact.
Let me give you a chance to talk about affordable housing a little bit. I haven't really heard, what do you think is the main best way to get affordable units available?
Yeah, there's, there's, once again, there are a lot of different things impinging on that. And you mentioned the permitting system. I just want to go back to that because we've had decades of problematic permitting in our county. We have a new system in place called Epic. And the transition to Epic has been very challenging. It has made things even slower for many people. But I do think it's the right way to go. And in the long run, it's going to be more fair. You hear about these scandals, these bribery scandals. You won't be able to do that. You're, you're, you know, you put your, your, your plans in and they just go in order they come.
Yeah, I need to, I need to wrap this up. We've only got about a minute. I've got two questions about traffic. I'll give you each a chance to say, what's the first traffic thing you would do to fix congestion? Well, you've got about 15 seconds.
You used up seven of it right there.
Sorry.
You know, more bike trails, more pedestrian access and mass transit, they're, they all go hand in hand and there's a lot of that.
Good.
Our mass transit is free for everybody on our island right now. I want to get every high school to do field trips with their teenagers.
Okay, that's, we're done. I have to stop. Mahalo to our guests for joining us tonight.